Eyes and follow blindly that decision, no, we mustn't do that. So I submit, Mr. Wong Ting Kwong. Thank you, Madam Deputy, for the Employment Amendment Bill 2017. Since the resumption of the second reading debate, many members spoke on the bill. Now, we're in the committee stage to consider Dr. Fernando Jones amendments. I would like the government, Dr. Lo Che Kwong, to clarify a number of points because we don't want the public to be misled, especially those following this debate life. First of all, the Labour Advisory Board on labour affairs, on labour welfare, or on labour relations. What is the purpose of this platform? What is the status of the LAB? How is this a relationship? What is the relationship with the government? So please explain that. Now, people saying that the LAB has all the say, but you have to explain what their role is. Do, are we supposed to respect the LAB? In particular, the consultation outcome of the LAB? What is our position? What should be the government's position? Please make that clear. Otherwise, we see too much of an inflated ego of Legco. That is, Legco won't need to listen to anybody. We call the shorts. So is that the case? So Secretary, please explain that. Second point, I'd like you to clarify, Secretary. The reinstatement order. Now, we're talking about the special staff and then you keep saying that three months' salary or seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars, that's too little. But then in the law, there are free sums involved. So when there's a UUD, there are actually free sums involved. So you have to explain clearly what those free sums are. For the three-month salary or the ceiling of seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars, how are they related to the free sums involved? Is it really true that we're just talking about small sum of three months' salary or seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars? So we're not doing justice to the employees? So, but in fact, there are three different kinds of payments. So please explain that clearly to the public, especially those following this debate life. The third point. Court order. So many members saying that the employer can buy his way out from the court order. But what is it about the court order apart from the reinstatement order? If there's no reinstatement, does it mean that? Or is compensation part of the reinstatement order? It's not independent of the order, is that right? So you have to explain that clearly. This court order, it's not that you can just buy it with money, but rather, there are two parts. There's reinstatement, there's compensation. Both have to be complied with. So you have to make it clear. Don't mislead the public to think that the bosses could just buy themselves out of the court order. No, that's not the case. So Secretary, you have to explain that clearly. So the people, the public won't be misled. Fourth point. Yesterday, in the secretary's speech, he said that if Dr. Fernando Jones' amendments are passed, there is a chance the government might withdraw the bill. Now, many members have spoken on the bill. Last time, the bureau withdrew the bill. And then this time, there's a chance the bureau might withdraw the bill. And then they are all keeping the blame on the FTU because of the March eleventh by-elections, because of this, that and the other. So you are wholly responsible for the withdrawal of the bill. FTU. So I think the bureau has to explain whether it's because of the FTU there is withdrawal. But really, coming back to it, the FTU has been really stupid. They, if they propose six months, you should have proposed one year. Then you would have trumped them. And let's see if they will support it. You should have just trumped them with some higher bid, in a way. But of course, the FTU won't go for something so unrealistic. Do you think it's because you could exaggerate it? Then you are better, you are more competent? No. So the bureau has to explain why there was a withdrawal and there might be a withdrawal. You have to explain why you're doing that. So the FTU must be, must learn to be smarter. You have to be on moral high grounds and then you could kill people without even using a sword. Now, so I submit. I hope the bureau will explain all those points. Thank you.
Mr. Jonathan Ho. Well, first of all, I thank Mr. Wong's reminders. Of course, we have to always reflect upon ourselves. Well, someone said that FTU has always occupied a very special position, that we monopolize a position. I would like to remind you that if seven of you get together, you can form a trade union. It is easy to set up a trade union, but it is difficult to maintain it and run it. If Dr. Kookaki thinks that being a part of a trade union is so good, then he's most welcome to start one of his own to fight for workers. But that is not his true intentions. When items are debated in the Legco, it takes longer than just one day or one occasion. What happens in a workplace is not something that happens over one day. It's a long-term game, like a chess, like a game of chess. I would like to say that you can't just take items out and discuss it in vacuum. When it comes to actual implementation, that is different. We all fight for the welfare of workers. So we should not be that different. We all deal with large-scale labour disputes. When it comes to minor ones involving one or two people, they will come to us. We've handled cases of a group of teachers, less than two hundred people. They were turned away by their own labour union, so they come to us. So they keep talking about how things are handled with labour disputes involving over two hundred people. But we talk about helping workers in every situation. Reinstatement order, will it actually get them back into the workplace? That's their focus. People who are watching this live may, might be lost in the debate because they've been taken round the garden path many times. There are some members who are not familiar with the law and the bill. You don't need the consent of an employer now to have a reinstatement order. Whereas in the past, the tribunal will, can only make an order with the consent of both employer and employee. Now employees can ask for reinstatement. Taking a step back, if the order is not complied with, how much compensation will be paid? People talk about seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars is little. Of course, the more, the merrier. Well, but there are three sums. There is the terminal payment and the additional compensation, subject to hundred fifty thousand dollars and a further sum of seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars. So that will be the additional compensation if there is a reinstatement order. Is that sufficient? I'll leave it to the public to decide. Dr. Jones' amendment is to include more details for the court to consider when making the order. The proposal endorsed by the LAB already covers the factors to be considered. That is, the situation, the relations between the employer and the employee. The court has to decide on the circumstance under which the dismissal was made, possible difficulties encountered with the reinstatement, relations between employer and employee, and the work environment. If Dr. Jones wants to set out more factors to be taken into consideration by making it more rigid, how can the court ensure that there is an amicable settlement? I don't think the court can do it. So the amendment is not the best choice. Dr. Jones also says that, well, the Legco should be involved by positive vetting if the amount is to be changed. The reinstatement order has taken a very long time in Legco. And if the amount is to be changed and it involves the Legco, it will take a very long time. Well, about five cases a year, twenty-five cases over five years. Should we inject politics into just the adjustment of the amount? Is it a good thing? Importance attached to the LAB by the secretary. There are a number of representatives from labour unions and trade unions. They have had detailed discussions. It's taken a while before it's reverted back to the administration. Every time, representatives of one side accuse the other side for betraying the other side. If the administration don't try to preserve the authority of the LAB, well, then I don't think that politics can be taken out of negotiations. As I said, that labour dispute involves a long-term, is a long-term game of chess. So you have to preserve the credibility of the LAB. If this is not resolved, it would be difficult to see any improvement of labour rights. Because if you involve politics into everything, that will, employees already have little bargaining power. It will be very difficult to move forward. That is one of the improvements. If the secretary doesn't tackle the issue squarely, it will affect our image. Thank you. Does any other member wish to speak? Dr. Fernando Jones. I'm compelled to reply to what members have said to my amendments. There are a lot of misunderstandings and distortion, deliberate or not. I don't know. Was Dr. Kookaki, Ray Chen, and Mr. Eddie Ju help to explain and dispel these misunderstandings? But still, Mr. Jonathan Ho doesn't understand. He said that, why would I want to have positive vetting to further delay it? Well, he did not listen to me. It's because exactly for fear that the administration would not do anything. Because under negative vetting, we don't have the power to initiate it. Under positive vetting, members of the Legco may, by resolution, propose to adjust the amount. So we will have the power to initiate an adjustment. The administration has the same power. We have not taken power from the administration. It's just that we want to have the power to initiate an adjustment. And that is given the track record of the administration. They have been very passive for the past twenty years. If I have to rely on you to do something, when is the next time? Another twenty years? That's why I moved this amendment so that the administration will not be the only, be the only party that can do something. And I want to further elaborate. This is just to give the Legco power. Mr. Felix Chong and Holden Charles said that, well, employers should be allowed to engage a replacement. Yes, it's wrong to unlawfully and reasonably dismiss the person. They should be allowed to engage a replacement. I always say that a replacement is allowed. It's just that when an order of reinstatement or re-engagement is made, and the court has to decide whether it is practically reasonable. Usually, the employer will say that I've already engaged a replacement and the vacancy has already been filled. My amendment is that you have engaged, engaged a replacement well and good. However, when the court decides whether it is reasonably practicable, they, they will not be restricted by the fact that the employer has already engaged a replacement unless the employer can prove two points. First, if the vacancies not immediately filled, the operation of the company is affected. And that is perfectly reasonable. So it is, it would be easy for the SME to explain. That's why I don't see any reason why, why SMEs are put in a difficult position. And the second point is that, well, the employer has already waited a reasonable time before a replacement is engaged. That is perfectly reasonable. And under such circumstances, then the court will have to consider, given that fact, it may not be reasonably practicable to reinstate the employee. But they say that I am unreasonable and I don't allow employers to engage a replacement. I think they have completely distorted what I said. Felix Chong said, well, the company can't operate, they can't wait forever. That's exactly the opposite of what I said. I said, if you have reason, if there is a reason for you to have to immediately fill that vaca, that vacancy, otherwise the company cannot operate well and good. Go ahead with the engagement of the replacement and explain to the court. I just don't want a situation when employers can abuse this reason by saying, I have already employed someone else. I don't want to get bogged down in some minor points. Jonathan Ho said that, what is the most important thing about this bill? It's because without the consent of the employer, the court can make the order. Sorry, you may think that this is the most important point. To me, it's, it's just the basic. The employer has already unreasonably and unlawfully dismissed you and you expect the employer to reinstate you. You can keep on dreaming. That is not the most important point. The most important point is that that the right to be reinstated can be achieved when the court makes the order without the consent of the employer. Well, the order of reinstatement is, doesn't mean that there is, there is a right to be reinstated. Because as we've explained many times, that you can pay to, to not comply with the order. Previously, I tried to propose an amendment to give a choice to the employee. Because this is right when he's been unlawfully and unreasonably dismissed. If the employee chooses to be reinstated, it doesn't really matter, you say that, well, they don't get, they don't get along, he's not wanted. Well, there are many reasons why someone would insist on being reinstated. The choice should be given to the employee and not the employer. That was my original proposal. But the chairman said that is out of scope. Mr. Felix Chong's right. It's not just about increasing the further sum to six times of monthly salary. I should give the right to be reinstated back to the employee.
I have to make this clear. And because of this and the resumption of second reading, I vote abstention. If my amendments were not passed, I can only vote abstain. Because in principle, I think this bill not affording workers to the right to reinstatement, I find it unacceptable, simple as that. But why do we insist on the right to reinstatement? We've cited this being a basic right. I men, about this many times, that why is this employee we dismiss unlawfully and unlawfully, but insist on returning to the post? So they could be union leaders. So back in nineteen eighty-three, eighty-four, the MTRCL back then had an industrial action because they have this staggered shifts to let us employee discontent. And the peak, there were seven thousand taking part. The union leaders was on a hunger strike. At the beginning, it was successful. However, the second strike, the MTRCL took an iron fist. They laid off three hundred strikers. And those workers wrote confession before being reinstated. At the end, thirteen of those were not re-engaged. And of these thirteen workers, most of them are union leaders, including the chairman and the vice chairman, including as well as the active participants. This was the lesson. To this day, the MTR staff union was unable to restore to its former might an organization. When a major organization to dismiss union leaders unlawfully and unlawfully, they could dissolve unions. The FTU should know firsthand. And you've gone through a lot of strikes. For example, the Canton-Hong Kong strike, as well as the Tram Workers' Strike. You're familiar with the history, that how the labour leaders have been subjugated. If this bill can empower the workers for their right to reinstatement, then the employers will be less aggressive. So when considering to dismiss their workers unlawfully and unfairly, they have to consider that if the court decided that they have broke the law and a reinstatement order been awarded, that there is no way to get around it. They couldn't get rid of this enemies. That will be a powerful union. I believe that the FTU members are familiar. However, they don't have a choice. They're in the pre-establishment camp. Before handover, they took a different position from now. And now they are part of the Legco Executive Council. So about protecting the administration and protecting workers' rights, they don't know how to strike a balance. So they are in this LAB. According to the LAB's website, it is not a statutory organization. And they were at Vice Commissioner of Labour on General Labour Matters. And the commissioner has served as a chairman with twelve non-official members, with six from both the employer and the employee side, respectively. So for the so-called elections of the members, the three million or so workers in Hong Kong cannot elect, elect the LAB employee representatives. They'll, and they'll be elected among the trade unions. And how these trade unions will assist subsidy organizations under FTU. So they've been actually manipulating the representatives of the LAB. And even the LLO claims that the election method of the LAB and violation of the Confident One for, for allowing representative labour organizations to enter this trade-petite negotiation platform. And you claims the LAB have this manifested spirit of the trade-petite negotiation, while the LLO said otherwise. So Mr. Wong Ting Kwong was right in urging the secretary to elucidate what sort of organization LAB actually is. That for anything related to labour rights and labour relations, must reach a consensus at the LAB before taking it forward. And there's no consensus that will not be taken forward. So the consensus, when it arrived at Legco, will be untouchable. And for the existing bill amendment, and it claims that we, we, as, the Legco members of all the powers. So who, so who is actually legislating? LAB or Legco? So the Legco members have tried to move amendments on the government's bill. And then we add to be accused of being majestic and so on. Does this make sense? And for the directly elected representatives, for those, we have a unpopular base. And if we think there's anything wrong on government's proposals or having the right of reinstatement or not, and with such a light penalty to pay for not complying with the reinstatement orders, if we don't safeguard these basic principles. And the government's bill proposing a payment in lieu of the order, there have been a discussion in the legal circles. And the, the legal circles have great reservations on this. And if not, not compliance should not be discharged with payment. It constitutes a contempt of court. Non-compliance could have been a criminal offense. Unfortunately, the government is hiding behind the LAB while pulling its strings. And it claimed that the LAB's consensus is our position. Whatever we discussed at the LAB, if the Legco proposed amendment, they were ruling out withdrawing the bill. This is all a mess. This is a complete disregard of Legco, as well as the popular support behind it. The whole thing is a deception. Any members would like to speak?
Secretary for Labour and Welfare. Thank you, Chairman. I urge members to vote against the group amendments moved by Dr. Fernando Chong. I would like to clarify to
Uh I would like to clarify two things first. Firstly, uh Mister Allokin and Mister Liang Yucheng. Haven't quite uh. Listened to my clarifications and that of Mister Ray Chen. Let me um. Reelucidate. When a government accepts the L A B consensus, that will become the government's position. The administration will of course. The. Respect the L A B. Um suggestion on the various labor's policy and legislation which has been in standing practice by the government. Another thing when I clarify is that Mister Liang Yucheng has repeated. That L A B had discussed it, Doctor Cheng's amendments, but failed to reach a consensus and. The ga- they had reached a consensus on the government's bill. I believe the other clarifications and real details of L A B, I do not think that um. This is the appropriate venue for a detailed discussion at this committee stage. I will uh do that another opportunity. So Doctor Cheng's moved through government amendments. And and he proposed to modify and clause four one of the bill. That um if employer engage replacement for the employer who has been dismissed, the court or labor tribunal must not take into. That fact into account in determining whether R I or R E of the employee by the employer is reasonably practicable. Unless the employer, well, uh Doctor Cheng had mentioned that unless the employee shows that. A, it was not practicable for the employer to arrange for the employee's work to be done without engaging a replacement. So these words is actually important. I like what Doctor Cheng said. That wording, that is not practicable. And B, the employer shows that. The employer engaged a replacement after the lapse of a reasonable period. Without having heard from the employee that the employee wished to be reinstated or re-engaged. And when the employer engaged the replacement. It was no longer reasonable for the employers to arrange for the employee's work to be done except by a replacement. I hope members can take note. According to Employment Ordinance, section six A. And and five six A for unreasonable unfair dismissal, that um within nine days of a dismissal, they can. As claim relieved from the labor tribunal or the court. So at any day after nine months of dismissal, within nine months of dismissal, um if they. So Doctor Cheng's amendment. In um after a reasonable time and with and and haven't heard from the. Employee wish to be reinstated, re-engaged it before uh. Rehiring, hiring of replacement would like to operation difficulty. And the fact that the employer had engaged a replacement, that whether. Uh would make it impractical would have led the court to decide. By the court and labor tribunal based on the individual circumstances. And before the court and the labor tribunal making order and. The employee and employees have the opportunity to make their case. In other words. Um to decide whether it's reasonably practicable to be reinstated, to reengage and. There should could be comprehensive and wide considerations. We do not think that we should not be over uh res- making overly specific restrictions. Doctor Cheng's amendment um want the employer to prove that um. That the administration claims that um there's such demands. And in determine that whether it is uh reasonably practicable is, there's such requirements unreasonable. I hope that those in the legal sector and the uh member from the uh legal constituencies. To consider whether we have to restrict the labor cur- curricula of the court. As for whether is um reasonably practicable. So a- so after dismissal, it is, this are two different concepts. And this restriction is um unreasonable to the court.
For the second group of amendments, Doctor Fernando Cheng proposes to amend the proposed section thirty-two. And a bracket, one bracket being clause five of the bill to increase the further sum from three times the employee's average monthly wages. To six times. And to remove the ceiling of seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars. I would like to state clearly the position of the government. The government finds this amendment unacceptable. Many members believe that the further sum proposed in the bill is on the low side and it is not deterred enough. So employers would comply with the reinstatement or re-engagement order. I would like to point out that under the current employment ordinance, the court or the labor tribunal may grant. Terminal payments and compensation of up to one hundred fifty thousand dollars for unreasonable and unlawful. Dismissal. The further sum under consideration here is um to be paid. When the employer does not comply with the reinstatement or re-engagement order. So this is additional payment in the circumstance. But we must bear this in mind, where there is unreasonable dismissal. And if um um and the employee concerned is eligible for a long service payment, he will also be paid a long service payment. And if the employer does not pay the further sum, then it is a criminal offense. I must also stress that the government attached uh respects greatly the views of the Legislative Council. But when we amend any labor legislation, the government also is duty to fully consider the impact on both employers and employees. The L A B is a platform for us to deal with some issues relating to employers and employees. I must also stress that the government's proposal is the consensus after many rounds of discussion. Is a hard-earned outcome. For the third group of amendments. Miss Doctor Cheng proposes to amend the proposed section thirty-two N A three in clause five of the bill to. Of the bill to the effect that the ceiling for the further sum may be revised by resolution of the Legislative Council that is positive. Wetting instead of by notice published in the Gazette that is negative wetting. Now, in the current bill, uh this is, it is proposed that the Commission of Labor may. By notice published in the Gazette revise the ceiling for the further sum. But whether it's positive wetting or negative wetting, Latcha members have the power to. Amend and pass or otherwise uh relevant um subsidy legislation. And also. Um for the ceiling of further sum. Um actually for the um. Compensation of for revising compensation among under uh sec- uh section thirty-two P. It is also by negative vetting. So therefore revising this further sum, we are approaching the same. Practice of negative vetting. And also, uh under section thirty-two P five of the employment ordinance. The Commission of Labor may by noticing Gazette revise the compensation amount, so we believe. That we should adopt the same approach in revising the amount for compensation and further sum for U U Ds. In March, um the Labor Department reported the proposed amendments of Doctor Fernando Cheng to the L A B. As I explained, the L A B did not reach any consensus on the amendments, so we can see therefore. Doctor Cheng's amendments are not accepted by both the employers and the employees. That's why the government have uh believed we should maintain the original. Proposal. So I asked members to vote against um the amendments moved by Miss Doctor Fernando Cheng. Doctor Cheng, do you wish to respond, reply? Yes, please, Mister Chairman. I'd like to. Explain further the few points made by the secretary just now. First of all. Doctor Zheng Law said that in my first group of amendments, I. Include two conditions before the court could consider whether the. Reinstament or engagement is practicable. So the if say the employer has already engaged a replacement. And if I impose these two conditions, would that be too harsh? So he finds those conditions unacceptable. Now, the two conditions I men- I propose first, the employer must prove that if. He does not engage a re- replacement for the employee in question. Then it is not practicable to arrange. The work that needs to be done. Uh I give an example. Let's say there's a receptionist, there are only three persons in a company and there's one, one of them is the receptionist. Um during the day, during office hours, the uh company has to receive gas and take calls and so on. Now, but the employee is dismissed, although it's considered unreasonable and fair, but the company would have to hire someone else to be. The receptionist at once, otherwise it's not practicable for the company to continue with this operation. So that's the condition. Is specific and is reasonable. Why is it not acceptable? Why so outrageous? The second condition. Under the current legislation, after the employee is dismissed. Within nine months, the employee may. Um file a case with the court to say that uh is a case of U U D. So let's say the employee only. Filed the case with the court, uh eight months after it's dismissed. Uh the employer could not have waited till after nine months to find a replacement. And then you say I'm being unreasonable with this amendment. So I think you know, that's not how I say, I. I I I'm put it, I propose it. I'm not saying that the employee is not allowed to hire a replacement. I'm just saying the employer has to prove that uh the employee has no, has made no indication for reinstatement. So within a reasonable period of time, the employer therefore hires someone else. And what is a reasonable period of time? That's for the court to decide. And as you put it, um secretary. Let's leave it to the court to decide. So uh so I will leave it to the court to decide on the reasonable period. Uh perhaps I explained that, perhaps the secretary didn't take note. Now, so this person has left the post and he's not made indication for reinstatement, but eight months later, he then said it's this uh. U U D. Uh but the employer's already hired someone else. So if I consider a reinstatement, if you consider whether it's practicable. But in this case, it would be tricky, isn't it? Because it's eight months already and the employer would have employed someone else. So that's the whole point of this condition. So under these two conditions, the court may consider the factors. And that is um if the employer has already hired a replacement is reasonable. And then a court will consider whether it is practicable to have a reinstatement or perhaps, so the court could come to. The um conclusion that it is not practicable. And what's wrong with that? The secretary tried to portray me as being unreasonable, but. I just don't follow the logic of the secretary. On um the the payment, well, secretary listened to Mister Wong Ting Kwan, Mister Wong Ting Kwan mentioned there are free sums involved. Uh the first is long service payments, the secretary mentioned that, but L long service payment is um. To be offset by the M P F contribution, you haven't sorted that out yet. So if this bill is passed today and it commences at once. When you um recently or unlawfully dismiss an employee, of course you have to pay him. Long service payment, that's the legal requirement and then the L S P could be offset by M P F too. So it doesn't matter whether you dismiss a person recently or reasonably unlawfully and awfully, you have to pay the L S P, so don't try to say that. Um that you're paying them a large sum and for the one one hundred fifty thousand dollars compensation. Well, that's the maximum, doesn't mean that the employee will always be paid a hundred fifty thousand dollars. It's only after the court has ruled that this is a case of U U D before the compensation will be paid. And it's paid only because reinstatement is impracticable. And that's why compensation is paid. Uh so don't try to. Make it sound that uh the employee will get paid this, that and the other. And for the hundred fifty thousand dollars of compensation amount. The that's the maximum. The court has also to consider whether the employee. Um is responsible in some way too. For example, um the employee is dismissed. And then he says he can't make ends meet and so he asks the employer for compensation. But then the court may ask whether he's been looking for a job or he's just been sitting at home for six months or longer and not working. And then he claims that uh he's not making a living, but then the court will consider that. Whether the employee uh should also have been looking for a job actively, perhaps the employer has been looking for a job actively, but. Uh uh there aren't many such job opportunities in Hong Kong for his particular skills. Well, otherwise. Um if that's not the case, would the court always give you the hundred fifty thousand dollars maximum amount? No, but if the court believes the employee is responsible in some way, there will, there will be a discount. And you won't get the compensation for U U D. You only get it because there is no reinstatement. So don't try to make it sound that the employee is paid all these different amounts. So therefore, why is it so unacceptable to make it six months salary? Please explain that. Don't, please don't try to um shift the attention. And for the third group of amendments on clause five, that is um instead of um by notice in the Gazette. I said it must be by resolution in the council that is a positive vetting. As I said, the point is not that we want to take away the government's right to revise amongst rather, we want to give. Leave the powers of Latcha so we could proactively move, propose amendments, we don't have to wait for you. Otherwise, it could be twenty years before you uh to um revise the sum, so we could um do it by resolution any time. Let's say two years later, uh we believe the six months salary is not enough. If my amendment of six months is passed, then there is not even a need for this technical amendment. Because there will no longer be a ceiling. For the further sum. So as I've explained clearly, if my second group of amendment is passed, I withdraw my third group of amendment, so please. You know, explain things properly. So just be fair to. Tell the whole story. And for some of you who may not know the entire story, you try to make me um. Sound unreasonable, but if you don't know what I'm talking about, please study the paper. In fact, the amendments I'm proposing are already in place in other countries like in the UK. For many years, we're lagging behind other countries. We're also not living up to the. Standards of the um International Labor Organization. Now, we do not pass the amendments today, especially the ones I'm moving, then we will just um. Giving the impression to the international community that our labor protection. Lacks far behind the international standards. And also reinstatement order is a basic human right. You know, the right to uh reinstatement is a basic. You know, the right to uh reinstatement is a basic human right. And there are a few cases of um reinstatement order to um give play to the reinstatement right. Let's say an employee has been dismissed by the employer and then the case is taken to the court. That means um there's a total breakdown of the relationship between the employers and employees. And if um the employee still insists on reinstatement, this is rare. But here, we're just talking about protecting union representatives. I've told on that point, I won't repeat myself here. Now, the F T U, if you truly represent workers in Hong Kong, please think about this carefully. This bill gives protection only to a small number of people. Very few people would actually um want to exercise their right to reinstatement through a reinstatement order. So this is just to protect the handful of union representatives. I hope members will consider very carefully and support my amendments. Thank you.
I now put the question to you that the first group of amendments moved by Mr. Fernando Jung be passed. With those in favor, please raise your hands. Dr. Fernando Jung claims a division. The division bell will be rung for five minutes. Please proceed to vote. Please proceed to vote. Please check your votes. Please check your votes. If there are no queries, voting shall stop and the results will be displayed. If there are no queries, the voting shall stop and the results will be displayed from F C. Sixty-one present, fifty-four-three against, abstentions seven. From F C members thirty-one present, eight-four-twenty against, G C members thirty present, fourteen-four thirteen against.